Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our study session to order. Tonight, we have our -- well, we're going to start off with our PEG fees. We've just given all this information here, so...
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I had requested this from our comptroller a while back of the canceled checks that were received. I was hoping to get them from 2003, '04, but it seemed like that may not be possible at this time. And I'm going to need some time to review these things, to go over some of the facts that I have dug up through past budgets and from the outlines from Plant Moran's audits, and compare the two. But that's how I'm going to open it up right now.
Sure.
Because I've got some information to share with you guys of all the work that I've done, and the adding and subtracting of numbers. And we can open up however we feel to open up about what we're going to do about the studio at the time, I guess. I guess this is what we really want to do, is to see what we're going to do for a studio that we desperately need.
No, Ray, we're on PEG funds.
Well, that's what the PEG funds are for, yes.
Okay, yeah, because we're going to start with the PEG funds and then the studio, second.
Okay, well...
I don't want him next to him. I want to keep this just with PEG funds right now.
The PEG funds, I'm going to start off by saying, you know, this had been troubling me since I found out, and shame on me for not knowing, that the PEG funds were really a restricted fund. I'll begin with saying with that. I've been sitting down in this audience for many years, and I remember we're always talking about we had no money to fix our studio problems. And that's a known fact. Matter of fact, this past April, all of us were sitting here when former emergency manager Bob Ankrap said they needed about $800,000 for a new studio. And it was said, "We don't have the money." And then just here in the last couple of months, we're notified that we had $890,000. And I just about fell out of this chair. Okay? And it's the first time I ever heard of PEG funds being restricted. So then I went back, started going through the budgets that I've had, and never saw anything of PEG funds being restricted. All I saw was cable TV. And then I continued to search some more, and I started searching the Plant Moran audits and from back in 2003, 2004. And I saw PEG funds being restricted. Then it was a seven-year period that nothing was shown. They were all intermingled with transportation, and Plant Moran noted them with a note number 12. And I looked at that, and it never said anything about PEG fees. Then PEG fees all of a sudden started showing back up in the Plant Moran audits as PEG fees. But again, we as city council people don't have a professional staff behind us to tell us what is and what isn't going on. We rely on good faith that the information given to us is clear, legal, and transparent. And I believe personally that there's much more money than $890,000. And I want to know where it's at, if I'm correct. Hopefully, I'm not correct. Hopefully, I'm not. But I believe that there's a lot of money missing, and I'd like to know if that money was used to pay for salaries, fringe benefits? Because when you look at our budget, when you see cable TV, you see salaries, budgets, fringe benefits. Where were those paid from is what I'm thinking, because the law says that we cannot use PEG funds for that. And money is not -- I'd like to have $3 million to build a studio, okay? So that's my concern, is where the money and how the money is. Okay? And I've got documentation here that I worked very hard on. I mean, I worked hard on this, taking money, doing adding and subtracting, and going over this. And my numbers match exactly what Plant Moran gives us, okay, in the budgets. These are not -- none of these are my numbers. These are all monies taken from Plant Moran and from our budget. So I don't know how to begin with this, Mr. Mayor, to come to you and say, "What do we do? How do we figure this out?"
Well, three of us have spent a lot of time on this, and the numbers all match. Fortunately, I'm kind of a saver of documents, and so I go back to 2003 in regards to my audit reports and different things. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but we reconciled back to the audited statements for every year.
It's one year. And they did combine everything together, transportation, so we couldn't get the ten number.
Which threw us, because they combined, but there's only one year. But we were able to pick up the next year, and we don't see monies that were not appropriately What was restricted to cable was only spent on cable.
I have all of Plant Moran's documentation here in front of me, from your audits.
Yeah, we -- how far are these?
I go back all the way to 2003, '04.
Okay, then we're at the same time.
And I can see 2011, it says, "PEG fees, transportation, sanitation levy reserved."
It's the only year.
And then, hang on, let me continue here, please. 2010, PEG fees are not listed at all.
Point of order.
But if you read what note 12 says, okay, "Fund balance and assets have not -- have been reserved for the following purposes: debt services, transportation, special levy, capital project funds, employee retirement systems." Nothing about PEG.
Yeah, right here.
It's not on note 12 anymore.
On 12, it's not note 12 anymore.
I'm talking about 2010. I'm talking about 2010. There was a seven-year period of that.
It's in a separate area, it's on the balance sheet.
It's on the balance sheet.
I'm looking at -- here's 2010.
Yeah, look at the last column. It says designated for cable improvements, 298-367. That's how they showed it in those prior years. And you go year after year and see it.
Okay, why -- let me ask you a question, because I'm not a CPA. And I don't know how -- all I know is I would add, 2 plus 2 comes up to 4 all the time. But why would they start way back in 2003, 2004, calling it PEG, and then all of a sudden drop it without calling it PEG fees and changing it? And then all of a sudden started back up again? I believe it was in 2011, '12 that they started calling it PEG again? See, to me, it comes down to transparency.
Linda, no, it's transparent. Linda, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah. It's just, different accounting rules change the way they have to present certain items. They will bunch items together if it's a smaller amount. So it's just how they present it, not to say that it's not theirs. On some of these, that's why I gave you, everybody, every year, and it shows the page of the Plant Moran audit, where they outline what's restricted. They changed the name of restricted fund balance a couple of years ago, so now they're putting it in the -- another rule. But in the documents that I gave you, it has this spreadsheet of the distribution of all of the revenues, where the 5% is the franchise, the 1% is PEG, and the 1% is what's restricted.
Correct.
And you see the audit report that shows what they say is the restricted balance. I gave you the page in the audit for every year, except for 2011, you're correct, for whatever reason, they humped them all together. But when I have the prior year and then make the adjustments back to the next year, and then it meshes with what the auditor's...
And all the numbers jive. We didn't have exceptions.
Well, I'm going to be, you know, forthcoming with everybody. I worked on this, and I also worked with Soheer Abdalhak on this. We sat many a night going through numbers, adding and subtracting, and going through this. And if Council Chair would allow me to ask Soheer Abdalhak on an explanation on this, I'd appreciate it.
All right, go ahead.
And he understands this a lot more than I do, but I'm just trying to get some basis of numbers here, that how this thing worked. And if we miss these numbers, I need to know that, okay?
Thank you, Ray, for all the hours we spent together on this. And I really, honestly, hope I am wrong with, you know, this issue. The numbers match, there is no doubt. The mayor is correct, he's a great CPA. All the numbers match. That's not the question. What did you do with the money? What did you buy? Show me the invoices. Show me the purchase orders. Show me where you spent it. I did FOIA all the resolutions from 2003 until today, which the city council passed. Bills or invoices belong to the PEG. That is the real question. What did we buy with $1,395 million, which I find nowhere there is any invoice or anything said belonged to PEG? I agree, his numbers are correct from year to year. Even they are commingled, that's not the issue too. There is lots of comminglings where they added them together with transportation and sanitary. My question, I look, I don't have a camera worth $20,000. I don't have chairs, I don't have room, I don't have anything to show that we spent that money. Please prove me wrong if you can, and I owe you an apology in front of the whole city. Thank you.
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
That's been the question, because, you know, we take all the numbers. And it's correct, the numbers do jive, but I don't see where we spent all of that money.
Exactly.
We should have a studio now.
Exactly, $1,395 million, almost $1,4 million.
So, you know...
All I'm asking, please, anybody in the city, mayor, city council, if there is one resolution in the last 15 years says or asks the city council to pass money to spend on PEG, I'll apologize to the whole city.
Since I've been here, I know I haven't seen anything come through that we spent on PEG, okay? I don't ever remem -- now, I could be wrong, but I don't forget things like that, okay? And I know we haven't spent any money, and if we have, it's been very, very, very little, okay? And I'm dumbfounded.
Ray, you and I went through it for many, many hours, and I tried to give the benefit of the doubt on all the expenses...
We spent a couple of months on this.
Which I thought, you know, they could be legitimate expenses. They came to $127,000. I am Muslim mayor, I want you really to build the studio. And I have sent with Joe Hashim to you messages to sit with the city council when they got elected. I want you to succeed, because me and my family have millions of dollars invested in the city. I just want transparency. If I am wrong, please prove me wrong. If I'm correct, I would like you to tell the city council in the residence, what happened to the money? Can we return it to the general fund? Did you divert it someplace else? And God forbid, I'm not accusing anybody of taking any money illegally.
That's never been a question.
That never came to our mind. But there should be transparency. Money belonged to X should go to X, Y goes to Y. That's all what I am about.
I guess my concern is, if that amount of money was spent, how come we're buying cameras that we got to put Band-Aids on, buying them off of eBay and piecing two cameras together to get one to work?
Madam Chairman, I remember just a few years back, like four, five years back, when we used to put on our program, when we watch it on TV, "We are sorry, because the voice is not good enough." If for all these years, we had this kind of bad videos, bad audio, and sometimes I believe, you know, specific incident where Bob Ankrap said for specific city council meeting, that he had to tape over a tape, which he used before, so the audio disappeared. That isn't fair to all of us, to anybody. I'm not, again, not accusing anybody for any wrongdoing, but this money is restricted, and what's restricted is restricted. I cannot use it for something else.
Okay.
I cannot use it to show that I have surplus or I need someplace else some money. So let's be frank with each other, at least. And again, with all my heart, I tell you to sit personally with the city councils. This city can be great city. You have the knowledge, you have the experience, which nobody can replace it. Just use it for the benefit of the public, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Just a few comments, and I think it's really important, when we talk about restricted funds, whether it's PEG, sanitation, or Act 345, for the sake of transparency, we've already seen with the Plant Moran audit, that there were deficiencies noted, right? And with that, I think it's so important, for the sake of transparency and the trust of our residents, our constituents, because government is always questioned anyway about transparency, about accountability, and being honest with people. It would behoove us all and through the administration to provide ledgers showing the, you know, payments, the revenue coming in, as well as the expenditures, as has been mentioned here tonight, to talk about what has been paid, and really look at that, because, you know, it's being flagged. And when we don't address it, it causes this air of suspicion, which we don't necessarily want. We don't want to look like that. And so I really am going to plead and say, we really need to do the right thing and have this information available, please. And that's really all I want to say about that. Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah?
Being -- I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot, Seeham, but I know obviously you've pretty much run this particular part of the city. Is -- I mean, because there is a lot of money that has come in, obviously, and I'm not accusing you, not by any chance. I'm just saying, what expenditures have gone out that you are aware of? Because, you know, quite honestly, I mean, obviously, you -- we haven't gone over it yet, because you just gave it to us today, right here, the estimate for some of the improvements. And I see $119,000 needed for cameras, camera controller and pan tilt heads, $173,000 needed, and $343,000 needed for tripods, intercom, and microphones. Obviously, these are pretty big expenses. And then another $28,000 for, I don't know, different little gadgets, not a techie, so whatever little gadgets. So with that being the case, and again, I'm not accusing you, so I just wanted to clarify that, but the ones that you are aware of, what expenditures have been used in the city? Because for myself, as somebody that's not knowledgeable on this stuff, just looking at the equipment, with due respect, and this equipment, everything else that I've looked at, it's elementary stuff, yet a lot of money has come in. So I don't know if that question is for you to answer, I don't know if it's for the mayor's administration to answer, but like Councilman Ray and like Mr. Soheer has mentioned, that question does need to be answered. And I don't know who would be the right person, but somebody's got to answer, obviously.
I just want to thank Bob Ankrap and ask him what you guys spent in the last five years, and take it from there.
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Muscat, please.
Want to answer, because people are asking...
Director Vance?
Hi. When you're referring to PEG funds, that whole cable department, 809 in our budget that you approve every year, is the expenditures that are being applied to it. They are allowed through the PEG rules to pay the wages of her and all the other...
So we've been paying her wages through the PEG fund?
And that's allowed.
It shouldn't be, no. Not according to this memorandum.
But where is that memorandum?
This memorandum is August 25th, 2008, and it's still in effect today. Matter of fact, I even called the attorneys...
It's related to the operation...
I even called the attorney that wrote that.
The attorney was called the other day, because I was aware of that.
And it's still effective. Salaries are not allowed to be from PEG. They're not.
They are.
Okay, well, this is for Mrs. Vance.
Well, I'm saying, an attorney told me today, who wrote that, said they're not allowed.
I can get you Neil Lato, the cable attorney, to say they are.
Yeah, and Plant Moran audits this every year, and they would go as well, 18 months that are allowed under the...
But they're there to audit, they're not going to tell you that you're...
I'm just reading...
There is something wrong.
We have a memorandum from an attorney who wrote this as what we go by, just like what we go by for the CSO levy. Same thing we go for Act 345. We go by those letters, okay? And salaries are not allowed, period. So myself, as a councilman, with my fiduciary duty, I have to report that, okay? And that's what I'm doing right now, all right? And as I went through the numbers, we collected $13,892,087 since 2003, 2004. Our total expenditure, this is not my numbers, these are numbers right off of the budgets that were submitted to council from 2003, '04, we spent $1,447,095. For that kind of money, I would think we'd have one hell of a studio. Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. So with the -- this is for the comptroller. With that money being spent, like you're saying it's allowed, so let's go on the pretense that it is allowed for right now. And I do see the memorandum, and I did read it, where it said it was not allowed, and I know you guys are saying something otherwise, but let's just pretend it's allowed for right now. If these numbers are correct, with $13,892,000 coming in from 2003 to 2018, we're talking about 15 years, $13.8 million towards salaries, or whatever it is...
No, that's incorrect.
Well, no, no, I'm saying, almost $14 million came in.
Right.
Okay? And what I'm saying is, you're saying that, okay, according to what we see here, it could only be used for capital expenditures, which basically means, the plain English version is improvements of the facilities, cameras, microphones, et cetera. And I'm just asking a simple question. If the $14 million figure was just under that, it's correct, where is the rest of the money at?
Now, of the $14 million number, and I don't know exactly the number off the top of my head for all of your expenditures, but if the $14 million is the total money that you received, 83% of it, we can do whatever we want with it.
Correct.
So only 16% of that $14 million, if that's the correct number for the cumulative, or whatever you're adding up, only a small percentage of that is restricted. And that's what those spreadsheets are showing you, is just the restricted part, it shows you the total amount that we collected each year, and then broke it down into what we can spend on whatever we want and what is restricted, and then carried the numbers forward. We look at each year, each page, and I showed you the revenue in the general ledger for each year, and then did the breakdown.
So then, based on the restricted amount, and presuming that $13.892 million is correct, which I have no reason to believe that you'd have false numbers in here, times a 16%, comes out to 2.22 million, 733,000. Would you say it's a -- and I know I may be putting you on the spot here, but would you say it's a correct statement, say that a lot of that went salaries? Because that's a lot of salaries.
No, very little went to salaries. And the only salaries it went to would be, like Stan...
Paying Stan?
I know. There's your original value.
But what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is, and I don't know their exact salaries, and I don't want to disclose it, obviously, publicly, but I believe you guys are somewhat part-time, right?
They're all part-time, and they're very little.
Yeah, so being part-time, and they do a great job, by the way, and it's no reflection on you guys, they do a great job, but Seeham just starting to get paid in the last year or so. Before that, I know you were a volunteer, and then they're working part-time. Where's the rest of the money going? Because as far as, again, I'm not a techie guy whatsoever, but I look at that camera, and with due respect, it looks like a camera I had for my house, well, maybe not that fancy, but, you know, 10, 12, 15 years ago. Because I remember carrying that big thing on my shoulder, and my family being embarrassed from it. So where's a lot of the rest of the money going? And I'm not questioning, I just think it's a legitimate question.
If you look in your budget, which every council has approved every year, you'll see the line items that money was spent on.
And that's correct, Mr. Mayor. I'm not ever going to deny that, because this is where I got the numbers from, was from the budget. That's never come to question. Again, when we see in our budget of cable TV, it shows us one big lump sum, and then it breaks down salaries and everything. It doesn't tell us, well, you know, out of the restricted funds, this is what goes here. And then we have to go hunt in the Plant Moran audit to find this stuff. And that shouldn't be. These people right here, part-time jobs here, that's what they call part-time job. I can guarantee, I'm not a part-timer. I guarantee I'm not part-time, okay? And for me, I'm learning as I go along here. And when I -- first time I heard the word restricted fund was this year, when you said it. Never knew PEG -- and I'll tell you, I went to a meeting here with a group of people, and I asked a question, "Does anyone know what PEG fees are?" Now, out of 25 people, not one person raised their hands. Not a one. Nobody knew about this stuff, okay? But I know that you've been sitting here for almost 40 years, or 40 years plus. This is something that shouldn't have been new. This is something to say, "Hey, folks, every year, we get restricted funds from PEG and this." And then when we hear all the time, "We didn't have any money for the studio." You've said it many times, many, many times, not once. "We don't have the money." So all of a sudden, now, when somebody tells me, "We have $890,000 toward a studio," what do you want me to think? What do you want me to start to do? So that's when I start hunting for $890,000, and I go back and I'm adding up numbers, and I see a total expenditures of $1,447,095 from cable TV. That's a lot of money in 14 years, to spend on cable TV when you don't basically have anything. I took a tour of that studio, and you might as well just throw it in the garbage.
Councilman Bazey?
I mean, I think we're just going back in circles. What we need to do is, I guess, reschedule this study session for the PEG fees. We just got this today, and we have so much stuff to go through.
I don't even know where to begin with this, to be honest with you. But I did ask for it, and I appreciate, I got it.
He needs to go to an auditing. Bottom line, somebody's going to...
We need to probably have some kind of audit done.
It's got to get done. Look through this.
I mean, how do we go about finding the right answer here, the true answer of the numbers? Where do we go? What do we do as a body?
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I was going to say, I mean, I appreciate having all this, and, you know, I know it took a lot of time and a lot of work. I think we really need an external auditor that the council hires, is my recommendation, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Were you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think an audit is a good idea, because at the end of the day, this is not our, you know, level of expertise to be able to decipher, you know, 800 pages of accounting. And obviously, the comptroller and the rest of the council are much, and the mayor are much smarter than us on this type of stuff. But since an audit has already been done by Plant Moran, I'm just throwing it out there, since the fee was already paid to them, to do an audit, just as an option, either have them come in and present to us, before we have a whole separate company and start from scratch and then pay all over again. Just throwing it out there as an option.
Okay.
Where somebody that has already audited, and from everything I know, a third-party, objective body, come in and tell us what they see here, to be able to answer us initially. And then if we don't get the answers that we're comfortable with, then we take it to another level with another third party taking a look at these numbers.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I would agree, because number one, they've been paid, number two, they have the numbers, and number three, if you're CPA and for audits, there's certain rules they have to follow, so they can't just say, you know... But I think what the council wants to hear is, what were the expenses? What was the money spent on?
Yeah, actually, I think we just want to see the invoices for where the money went.
I don't see where we spent any money on it. I mean, year in and year out.
Okay, Councilman? Mr. Mayor, do we have invoices for the money that was spent that we're questioning, that we can see?
You cannot go back 15 years in this operation and start looking for individual invoices and...
Because I know you said you keep a lot of papers, old papers, and that's how we ended up with a lot of this. So do you -- how far back do your papers go?
I -- but I don't keep invoices, I don't keep what... I don't keep, what I keep are budgets, you're in, in the June 30th, the last report that matches the numbers in the audit. And one has to assume, and I think it's an appropriate assumption, since all those reports and yours were audited, that when you get the audited statements, you get the, and back then, it wasn't BSNA, it was a different company, but I still have, it's similar to how it's printed out, and I keep those. Those are, tell me, if I want to look at a particular budget area or thing, and it gives me enough detail, but when you want to start filtering down into invoices, that detail's not there.
Good example, for the last five years, do we have the invoices that we could see? Or seven years? What, usually keep seven years for tax purposes?
If you want to do something like that, you've got to hire an additional person in the accounting department, because we do not have the staffing. I don't even know if they can do that.
Someone would have to go down to the basement and go, because it's not by fund, it's alphabetical order, so we would have to try and figure out most of the salary.
So most of the funds paid out was to salary?
Yeah.
I didn't see most of it being salaries, to be honest, when I looked at the detail. I thought there were, there's about ten or twelve items that are in that budget.
Yeah, I mean, you've got telephones, you've got map service over there, and all sorts of other items included in 2016.
Okay, point of order here, Councilman Abella?
So who, okay, but we have the controller here, we have the chief of staff, we have Seeham, we have the video people, we have the mayor, we have everybody here. Just at least verbally, not audit-wise, not a total breakdown, just like if right now somebody, here, I just did a total remodel at my office, right? If you ask me for every receipt, and I just did it last year, five, six months back, if you ask me for every receipt, being so close, you're right, yeah, you're right, Mr. Mayor, I have them. But let's say you come to me two years later, I probably won't hand the receipts, I mean, who knows, God knows where they would be. But I can tell you, I spent about forty thousand dollars, and I could say, well, I redid the walls, I put in all new desks, I put new windows, I put this, I put this, I put that. So at least verbally, for right now, can somebody, I mean, I don't care who, tell us what most of the money went to? Because I know you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, going on the budget, I'm talking about, just generically, we spent on this, we spent on this, it doesn't have to be exact numbers, I realize you don't have the exact numbers in front of you, but something so it looks more transparent. Is it of these?
Yes. An example, without pointing out everything, the first column says equipment.
Correct.
And it says, now, almost the bottom line, it says cable department expense. So this is 2004, sixteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, so that would have been capital purchases. I can't tell you what they are, because I can't even look that up in my...
That would not include salaries, then?
No. Then you see the second column, which is operational, that's the expense for all the other stuff, the telephone, the salaries, the dues, the newsletters, the, whatever goes into that department, operational expenses, you know, whatever pencils, I mean, all that kind of stuff is all bunched into there, and that matches what was budgeted in that cable department.
Did they come out of the peg fee, though?
Yes, they did, according to her, they did.
Well, according to, if that's what you're telling me is peg fees, then we've done something wrong according to state and federal law. All I can tell you is what the memorandum says.
Who is, where do, who sent this memorandum to who? It doesn't have a name on it, there's, it doesn't even have a phone number.
Well, it would apply to every community, I would assume, because it's not city by city.
Well, we're going to find out, we'll bring you that information, how's that?
Please keep...
Well, I will accept that, but don't be making statements that we don't know.
But look, I'm not, all I'm telling you...
Madam Chair.
Okay, point of order, please, because this memorandum says it's use of public education and government peg fees.
Who is the author of this?
It's these people right here?
The author is the law firm Frazier...
You know what, the law firms that you bring in, I don't know those people either. It's a law firm in Lansing.
It's a law firm in Lansing.
It's in Detroit, actually.
They represent Comcast in Lansing.
And we use Neil Lato, who's considered an expert in cable TV and has been for...
And then what we need, that we need to get another opinion of what we can use these for, and then try to hash this out, because I'm going to have, you know, I don't have a problem spending eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I don't. As far as I'm concerned, I'm a yes right now to redo the studio. I've got no questions about that. All I want to know is if we have more money that we could spend on it, then let's do it. That's the question to me.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
And then, I know you want to go with the next piece, I think Councilman Muscat kind of segued into that, but I want to recap. I think there's two things that need to be done here. I think one, a legal opinion letter is in order, the second one, on what you have, I agree with what you have already, but if that needs to put people's mind at ease, that costs taxpayers money, I don't know if that's necessary. The second thing is, the question is not answered, so therefore, I would recommend the council, and this is not to vote, because we do not vote in study session, but for public record, by resolution, have an external forensic audit by a third party, is my recommendation, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I'd just like to add, if, and I see the administration's point, but also see our council's point. I mean, you're saying we don't know who this is, that's fine. We have, as I recall, we put on the side for independent counsel, for the city council, and that's thirty-six thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
Thirty-five, whatever.
Somewhere around there. So with that being the case, maybe we can come up with somebody to give us a third-party opinion on this, in case, you know, this is not legitimate.
Do we all agree on that?
The city has a longstanding, like, before, or years ago, with Neil Lato, I would ask Neil Lato.
Understandable, but the council does have the opportunity to seek their own counsel with our own budget.
Madam Chair.
But, yeah, he's the attorney for, the cable attorney for Dearborn Heights, but a lot of other cities, and it's just a question of law, it's what the statute says.
Yeah, this covers every city that has pay funds, so it doesn't...
But I mean, Mr. Lato, so I, you know, it's not like, it's not anything fancy, whether you can include salaries for the people working at the studio or not, that legal question is not, so if you get it from him, or if you get it from Smith &amp; Smith, or Do We Cheat Him and How?
Well, then go to the Attorney General.
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
We can go to the Attorney General, but that's going to take an awful long time, too, okay?
Okay, point of order here. There's too many side conversations. If you want, you can go out in the hallway. That way it's not disrupting everybody.
Counsel Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
First of all, that would go, be a long ways away from Attorney General, which would be great if we can get it right away. That'd be the ideal thing to have. I guess we'd have to reach out to our state senator and see if she can get the opinion from the Attorney General, because that's the procedure that you have to go through. And my big thing is, is doing my fiduciary duty. I don't want somebody come down two years from now and tell me that I did this wrong, and I knew that it was wrong, and I'm not going to put myself in that position.
Okay, thank you.
Period.
Come up to the microphone, please. Please stop the conversation in the back, or go in the hallway.
There's no conversation.
I'm not speaking.
Well, Chrissy, you're laughing, and you're...
This is, it's a joke.
Well, then go in the hallway, because you're disrupting our city council study session.
You all have iPhones. Google federal peg law and see what's allowed in it. You don't have to hire a lawyer. It's a clear cut, you can use it only for equipment and for basically building. That's the federal law, and I spoke personally to this lawyer yesterday, and he said, the federal law trump every other law, whether it is state, county, or city. Google it on your phone, anybody, and you will see that I am right. You don't have to spend any money.
Thank you.
Just...
Councilman Abella?
Just as another option to keep costs down, and I don't know if this would work, but just throwing it out there, maybe SMCOG or MML? It has another possible option, because then that wouldn't cost us nothing, and I'm sure that...
I can reach out.
And they are an independent body.
I would know that, I would think.
They'll refer you back to your attorney, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Typically, when you go to them for an opinion, they'll refer you back to your city attorney, FYI, just to let you know.
Okay.
But you can try that.
But if we wanted an indep, well...
But then you're going to get back in a situation where you hire somebody, and council does have funds available, I believe it's fifty thousand in the budget.
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five, I'm sorry, thirty-five, thank you for correcting me, for legal fees. So, yes, just wanted to share that.
That issue, they, you know, probably have it, they probably know that, someone there would know that.
Between MML and SMCOG?
I will tell you, every time I've called to talk to them about something legal, they always, no both, they will always refer you back to your corporate counsel attorney, always.
Okay, so at this point, where do we want to take this?
I'd like to get a legal opinion, a third-party legal opinion. That would rest me, my mind, that we're doing the right thing. And if I'm wrong, I'm going to hoop and holler, thank God, okay? But if I'm right, then we need to clear this up.
So do we all agree to go out and find an independent legal opinion using our funds?
We can't take a vote on this.
No, but I mean, we can voice our opinion, we don't really have to vote to go use that fund, we just all have to agree.
Madam Chair.
So, go ahead, I didn't know if you were done.
Go on, go ahead.
So there's our city attorney, and then we use, like, for bond stuff, we use Miller Canfield, which is used, Faison-Bon, which is there, the Westland City Attorneys and several other city attorneys, and they, this, they might have somebody there that would know the answer to this right off the bat, I'm sure. They represent a lot of authorities, that Jim Faison, his wife was the brigadier general under Governor Snyder.
Councilwoman Hicks?
I was going to say, Madam Chair, I would offer to contact Senator Alexander, and if you're interested, have, and it may take a little time, but if you want a legal opinion letter from the Attorney General, we can do that, and that would be another option.
We can do that, too, we can still...
Point of order, there seems to be a lot of conversation in the back there, and I understand you may have to talk, but can you please do it in the hallway? You're disrupting our meeting.
All the conversations you whisper amongst yourself is not disrupting.
Excuse me, this is a city, yes, you're right, and show some respect.
You show some respect to me.
Some respect, please, point of order.
Who is this from?
Point of order.
Nobody will say who it's from.
The name is at the top.
Who is it to? That's basic law.
This is a, this is basic law.
It was to me.
In 2008?
Look, I asked for it, but I asked for it.
In the memo, it doesn't say who it's to.
Are you an attorney?
Okay, at this point...
And are you a councilperson?
Madam Chair, we're point of order, point of order!
Counsel Chair, I took an oath, I took an oath, it's my rear end that's on the line here, okay? So if I'm going to ask for something, I'm asking for it, and I shouldn't have to fight this of who's this from, who, why this and why that. It's my rear end on the line.
Well, you know what, we will clear this up.
I understand you're a citizen, but I'm also protecting your right as a citizen.
Councilman, Councilman. Hey, we will figure this out.
Move to adjourn for this.
Well, we have to allow public comment, but before we do that, I'd like to ask council members, is it okay if we use our attorney fees, if necessary, in regards to this, for whatever we need?
I would do a resolution, Madam Chair, immediately.
No, we don't have to do a resolution, we have to just agree, according to Parliament.
That's fine, that's fine.
Do, if we, if we all can agree that we need...
Okay, can I forget a five hundred?
Yeah, just an opinion, opinion letter, whichever, it's not going to cost a lot.
But we still have something else on the agenda tonight of the studio.
Well, I'm going to go over there, I'm going to cancel that part of it.
Oh, I don't think we should.
Madam Chair, I would, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, please, I would recommend that we had that scheduled, and we need to follow through. I know we're running late, but I think it's the right thing to do.
But see, what I hate to say is, we know how much money we have now, but if we actually have more in the end, we could actually do better than this, as far as the studio goes.
Before we go into the next section, I think there's a residence trying to...
Okay, come up to the microphone, state your name, address, in three minutes.
Suzanne Todd, Academy Street, I have only one request as a resident. Please have someone audit that big pack of papers that is in no way connected with Dearborn Heights. Let it be an independent, Plant Moran, no, please, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman...
Not to interrupt, but I just thought of one thing. The city of Dearborn has been very active in this, and they actually, when the AT&amp;T bill was passed, that all the cities had to have uniform franchise fees, they filed suit. So I would, you know, somebody can check with the city of Dearborn, their attorneys, and what they know about, if that one issue about if cable fees are, peg fees can be used for salaries or not.
Okay, thank you. At this point, like I said, I do agree with the cable studio, but if we have more money than this, you can do a lot better, couldn't you? I mean, there's probably some things you cut out of here that you would like to do, but you kept it within the budget, is that correct? It is. That's why I hate, you know, to discuss something if there may be a different amount involved.
I'm going to, may I, I agree, I think, in all fairness, thank you for what you've presented to us.
This is a great start.
Which is a great start, I'm excited to get this going. But I think, I think because of the questions that are still unanswered, in all fairness, I think if we can take a look and get those questions answered, then you can get a state-of-the-art studio, which would be a way better option for you, but also behoove our community, which certainly deserves it. I think that's really important, we do that, we need to restore public trust here.
You can kind of compare it, why would we go and buy an economy car when we know we can afford a Cadillac in the end? You're going to go trade that economy car back in, because now you got more money for a Cadillac, you know, it's just better just to go to what we can afford in the end.
Madam Chair, let me point one thing out. Our cable people are here. Week after week, one of you are always telling me, this thing's about ready to shut down. We got equipment that should not even be being used. The longer wait, you're going to shut down at some point, potentially, the cable operation, and I don't think that's to the betterment of the citizens.
And I agree, I agree, and it's to my opinion that we can hear things about the studio, no one says we're going to act on it, but we can start the ball rolling, that's my opinion. I'm here to try to do the right thing, and I get myself in hot water by bringing this peg money stuff up, but I have to, it's part of my job.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Councilman Wenzel?
I just have to say a couple of things. One of the things is, it was asked several times from everybody involved with this project, from administration to people that work at the studio, give us one example of something you spent the money on. I just looked at this, it looks like thirty-five thousand dollars spent on equipment in the last three years, and no one could even tell us they bought a microphone. I mean, just looking at thirty-three thousand in the last three years for equipment. And can someone give me a hundred dollars purchase? No, I mean, thirty-three thousand dollars, it says it right here, these numbers.
We have, we have bought some equipment, and Angela, can you, can you sort of recycle what we've gotten from that studio?
Since I've been here, we've gotten two of these handheld cameras, two sets of lavalier mics, and handheld mics, we've gotten a couple car readers, I think we had to replace at least one of our tape reader decks, we've got SD cards, a couple hard drives, and that's only in the last, um, one year, yeah, a lot of years.
And the AT&amp;T servers, too, look like expensive.
Yep, and you have to realize, there's billing for the studio as well, and then there's the equipment repair that we have to, we have to keep going because the equipment is so, you know, those are all expenses within the studio. You don't, you don't actually see, you don't actually see the brand new equipment, but it's the upkeep of everything that we're doing as well, you know, and then, of course, you know, just like you have a home, there's bills within the, within the, within the system and the cycle that, you know, you have to keep up with.
Thank you, that's what, I mean, that's what we were looking for, something, I mean, that doesn't equal thirty-three thousand, I doubt, but beside that, okay, that's something But beside that, okay, that's, that's something that we didn't get any answers to all meeting long. There was actually something was given to us.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And now, I'm, I'm, I'm into, for looking into some of these items that you need that can be taken anywhere or left at Berwyn, at the studios at Berwyn, or a different center somewhere else, something that you need. If you could put together something that you guys need, like right now, and is transferable to place to place or whatever, and present that to us, maybe we can start there.
Well, we did look into purchasing the equipment and Angela has just showed me the number that's here, I know, but installation. So if we were to purchase the equipment and not, and have it installed completely where it's not going to be removed, that would be wonderful. But if we would have to remove that, that equipment and reinstall it, you're talking about 30 to 40,000 dollars.
Okay, well, at this point.
So I don't know if that would, it would not be worth buying equipment and then.
Thank you for being honest on that.
Because that would be crazy for the, for us to have to pay that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, well, I think we're done at this point. Do we have any other public comment? Name, address, and you have three minutes, please.
Good evening, and sorry for coming here many times. Zohair Abdalha at 354 Rosemary. Again, I admire Saham and her family, we've known each other for a long time, and I don't think there is any better person than you to manage this project. And I hope.
I'm just a helper.
I agree with the mayor, the equipment are really bad, but I'm looking back at 2008, June 30th, there is $247,000 cable improvement. In the year before, in the year after, there was almost $1 million and 51,000 for cable improvement according, you know, to those documents from the budget and from Plant Moran. Nothing was done. I think, excuse me, even if I calculate what's in the budget on cable TV department, just add them up, you will come short 154,000 dollars than between what we collected and what we have in the fund. So those numbers are still short 154, and I hope you review them. And I don't mean to nag, but again, the FCC stated the money can be used only for capital assets and equipment. And again, I ask people, please, like I did with Ray, we sat for hours and hours, look it up so we don't get angry at each other because that's not our intention. Our intention is, I want to see studio built, state of the art in my city. I want to see the best equipment. I want to see your faces on those programs. I want to see.
No, you don't.
No, I do.
Not mine.
I do. Believe me, lots of people like to see the city council members, they like to hear from them, what, you know, what they doing, what our city is doing. Heads of department, the mayor, the businesses around the city. We like to know what's our city. Is it just bedroom, you know, community, or it's going to grow up to be some business, small businesses, some, you know, activities in it? I like to see that, and I don't care what happened before. And there is nothing wrong to say, you know, that we might made a mistake. Ray apologized the other day because he thought, you know, he was wrong. Nothing wrong. Men and women, when you are strong enough, you can say, I'm sorry, that happened, and let's move on. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
And, and I think how he ended is, we're in agreement. There was no diversion or intentional diversion of anything. If there is some kind of restriction in the pay fund, I can honestly look every one of you in the eye and say, I did not know about it. But the, I, I come back to the same point I made earlier. Studio and the equipment is, it's like having a car with 200,000 miles and the engine is smoking, and it could die tomorrow, it could last. I really think we've got, because it's going to take a few months to get this thing built and operational. I don't think we have the time. I want to go publicly on that because if the cable TV goes off, I'm just telling you, I think we're making a mistake by waiting because these numbers are not going to change. We tried to be, give you everything that, and we did give you everything that we have, and it isn't going to change issue number one, one way or the other.
Okay, at this point. We don't have study session, it's done. Have a good night.